All right, it is seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First item on business is the Pledge of Allegiance, Selectmen must be. All members are present. First item on business is the approval of minutes from December seventh. They're in your packet, are there any corrections? Are there any corrections?
I just have on page five, there was um section D, discuss boards and mission liaison assignments. I had some comments that I had made, I just was wondering if we could have a, for some of the minutes reflect.
The only comment I recall you making was you weren't happy with the assignments.
I wasn't happy because not, I wasn't able to get the assignments out. So I'd like to see if we can have a reflect that, I said that I wasn't.
And you also said you were gonna go to all the meetings anyway, so we could add that to it.
I mean, but you could put that in there too, I don't mind, I just like to have the discussion, I reflect that at all. You know, I made a, that was opposed to the assignment, that's my own impressions.
Is that a motion, Chris?
I'd like to move to amend the minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-three, to reflect my comments under page five subsection B.
Is there a second? Is that a friendly amendment?
Any, yes.
Motion has been made to as, to offer that as a friendly amendment by Selectmen de Sosa, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On the minutes as amended, are there any other corrections? May I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to accept those. Minutes as amended on December seventh, twenty-three minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? January fourth.
Did you put it in the bottom?
I did find a few corrections that were needed. On page two, for Paul Anderson's comments, I believe that he was talking about the company that was doing the appeals for your assessment, not the FOI.
Correct.
Okay. Page three, Patricia Sherry lives at one oh nine Depot Street, not Post Street.
One nineteen.
Oh, excuse me, one nineteen Depot Street.
Yep.
And then, page six.
Is that correct?
Page six, the tax refunds, it should be to approve the tax refund, not to pass the tax refund. That's what I was able to see.
That is a motion to amend the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I had a, I had a few others or a couple.
Let's take them, so we've got one on the table, we'll take that and we'll take the other. A motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So I just wanted to go back to the Paul Anderson piece, because I saw what Sarah said. But I just was insecure about how it came about, or why it turned, you know, we need to make sure we were processing. Because um, that deals with this, because I actually went to the meeting and wrote down what Paul had said, and Paul had said he had on, he had occasion on that day to have two assessment appeal hearings. And I have to say that the personnel that were handling that were extremely courteous and quite helpful. I was very impressed, I was very impressed with the way they operated. And that's what he said, however, the minutes say the following. It says, Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street Broadbrook, has stated positive response to the town's handling of FOIA. He reiterated that the town personnel has acted professionally and with integrity. And so they're completely different statements. And they completely different issues, and the words in the actual minutes aren't even anything that Paul said, so I just wanna make sure we have a process in place to accurately capture public comments, because this is way off, and it's something, something weird happened. So the other comment I have is on my was a vote on um there was a vote on the um, the Catholic Cemeteries.
Page six and seven?
Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, so there was a, there was a vote on subsection eleven after executive session, a motion to approve Catholic Cemetery's tax appeal. And it says that, it says discussion none. And um, actually, there was discussion. I gave a lot of discussion, I stated my reasons on the record for why I was voting against it, so here's my question, is I don't know why the, I like to ask if the minutes reflect what I said, doesn't have to be verbatim, but the fact that I was opposed to it, and why I was opposed to it, and that the minute should reflect that there was discussion, because it says discussion done. And that's the second issue. And the third one is just a comment that um, I noticed that the public participation some people come up with the public and they have long, long, they have some sentences stating what they were saying, what their point was, and others don't have that at all, in fact, a few people came to public participation, and it doesn't even say well, it's very limited, so, and I went back to old meeting minutes for the board selectmen, and generally, the the board has the minutes reflect a couple of sentences, or a little bit about what somebody says. And so, I just don't know, maybe we should talk about in the future about a policy about how we handle public comments, because we don't have to write anything, we can just say the public spoke on the topic and leave it at that. But then it should be uniform, I think, for everybody, or we have a policy that we're gonna put public comments in there a couple of sentences. So, I'd like to make a motion to, we already corrected Paul Anderson's piece. I'd just like to make a motion to reflect that, to modify the minutes. Page section eleven, on the vote on the Catholic Cemetery's tax appeal to reflect that the discussion, it should say discussion there was, and it should have a couple of sentences about my objections. I like that part of the minutes.
What were your sentences for objection, so it's correct?
So I had said that I objected to it, and I don't, I don't wanna just, I don't wanna make up something.
Right.
I didn't write down, so I'd like to ask if the um, the, as we just did before, a minute ago, ask if our reporting secretary could take a couple of verbatim sentences and just put them in the minutes, and that would be the motion.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I would like to table it in the second section.
Is there a second to table in the approval of the minutes?
Second.
It's a superseding motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are tabled. Okay. Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the board, I remember it's the public to address the board's selectmen. If you'd like to speak to the board, please identify yourself by your name and address and state your business. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then provide any more of the service online, the same opportunity. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? Yes, sir, name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street Broadbrook. I've been coming to selectmen's meetings for quite some time. And to the best of my recollection, it's been five members facing the audience. Now, my recollection may be limited to fifteen, ten minutes, but as far as I remember, that's how it's always been, I would prefer to see that. So nobody's looking at the side of somebody's face.
That you're certain of. There any other public participation? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Mark Lee. Gaines Court, Broadbrook. The wall that approaches the bench. It's the same shot.
I don't worry, it's not the bench.
I can't, I'm sure this curve, I have two exhibits here to show you. You can pass them on.
All right, well, I look better.
We'll just, if you've seen it yet.
When did it happen?
Uh, when's the last time we had that big rain?
I can't keep track.
One day.
Oh, the storm into um
Not this recent one, eleven last week, about a week ago. Now, this is a classic case right out of the movies, like a question for new assist, and what are you gonna do about it?
Do you want the tree removed, that's your, is it still there?
Oh, yeah, it's there tonight, as I drove by.
Happy to mention it to Public Works and we'll see what we can do about getting it out of there.
Okay.
But we, I'm gonna give you the photos back, because we don't take exhibits from during public participation.
Oh, okay, I just wanted you to see where I was talking.
Point taken, uh, probably works.
What do you call eight, that ten glossy?
Yeah.
Either that.
Oh, you were referring to Group W, actually.
Yeah. Circle and arrow, if you saw this, right, you were there.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention, Tom.
Okay.
Are there other public comment? Is there anyone, is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen, if so, please identify yourself by name and address and state your business.
Hi, Jason, Norine Farmer, two forty-seven Club, Southwater Street. Um, I wanted to speak tonight regarding DPW. I wanted to thank them for their um road cleanup in the previous last two storms, specifically the first storm um with that very heavy snow, the plow driver, I'm not sure who does my road, but he's a wonderful man, um he kindly stops and redirects his plow when he sees you out at the end of your driveway, cleaning up all the plow gunk that has gotten there, which is something they don't need to do, but it's very kind that they do do that, and I appreciate their efforts in trying to help us all get our spaces cleaned out, um. And I also wanted to just briefly discuss the contract negotiations that you had just done with them, um having gone through several contract negotiations in the past year with other union union groups in town, um, it's um it's a group effort to get to the conclusions of these things, and we are not an island upon ourselves where we get to just kind of decide whatever we want without input from everybody else in, not necessarily input, but the feedback of what everyone else in the state of Connecticut is doing with their specific union negotiations, um. What's going on in other towns directly impacts what we, what options we have within ours, and I believe based on looking at other contract negotiations for DPW workers, that contract was in line with what other towns were giving, as far as um both their benefit scale and their yearly increases, so I think it was a prudent and wise decision that everyone came to on that, and um and I personally think they well deserve what they received in that contract. They work very hard for us and they do a really good job, um, and again, it's not an easy process to negotiate these contracts with unions, and we are not an island upon ourselves. We need to look at what everybody else is doing, so I appreciate everybody who put their efforts into that, and um that's it. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment from anyone online? Okay, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. No communications, so we'll move on to reappointments.
Hey, Jason.
Yes.
Could you just adjust the camera, I can't, again, I'm gonna cut off the camera.
Completely up there, I can't even see it.
Thank you.
Repoints.
Would anyone mind if I take the Veterans Commission as one motion?
Go right ahead.
Okay, I moved to reappoint Robert Lake Junior, Scott Morgan, Kyle Obera, and Dee James Barton to the Veterans Commission, well, I'm gonna have, wait a minute, yeah, I'm sorry. Start over, I move to reappoint Robert Lake Junior, Scott Morgan, and Dee James Barton Junior as regular members of the Veterans Commission for terms expiring February, oh, no, I can't. Okay.
January first.
Yeah.
January first and February twentieth respectively.
Okay. All right, January first and February twentieth of twenty twenty-eight respectfully.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wow, that was.
Opposed?
Okay, I move to reappoint Kyle Obera to the Veterans Commission as an alternate member for a term expiring January first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here is the minutes. Okay.
Um, yeah, I moved to reappoint Kathleen Pippin, the Inland Water Course Agency, regular member, term expiring November sixth, twenty twenty. I'm sorry, I checked her off.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, for, well, a better part of a year. Chief Carl has been serving as our acting director of emergency management. That was while we were transitioning from the last police administration to the current police administration. Well, he and I have taken, taken an extensive number of emergency management courses in the intervening year. But we're at the point in time where an acting or an interim appointment really is no longer appropriate. He's doing the work, he is filling out the required documentation that gets submitted to the state. And so, I looked into what the appointment process was like for naming him on a permanent capacity. And the general statutes make it clear that the chief executive officer appoints the emergency management director, but the charter is a little more vague on that, so what I have in front of you is a draft letter of appointment that suggests that I am making the appointment after consultation with the board of selectmen, which thereby satisfied what that requirement would be. Chief, I thank you for the work that you've done so far and for the plans that we have moving forward into the future. He's got my wholehearted endorsement, I ask for the board to accept that as their recommendation as well.
Jason, could you just give a brief explanation of what the, what the role of the director of emergency management is?
So the director of emergency management is the person who calls, calls the emergency management team to order for annual drills, prepares and submits documentation to the state that allows us to recover emergency management grants, both the the annual grant that we get, and then if there are any type of FEMA reimbursements associated with specific instances. There's also a planning component that goes into it, in terms of, kind of what are we working on next, and you're stepping on my thunder a little bit here, because in my selectmen's report, I'm gonna talk about the storm this past week, and how that dovetails directly into what we have done with emergency management preparedness.
Are they, is the, is the person in the chain of command responding to emergencies?
They're, they're in the town power structure chain of command, the third in line. It's the first selectman, the deputy first selectman, and then the emergency manager. So when, under twenty-eight dash eight A, if an emergency is declared, the CEO of the town has incredibly expanded powers. And the absence of the first selectman or the deputy first selectman, those powers are vested in the director of emergency management.
And when there's multiple agencies responding to an emergency, like an everyday emergency, not a storm event, but, you know, some other kind of emergency, this, that doesn't fit into the chain of command of that, that's the normal chain of command, where you have the fire and police, and they deal with that on their own.
No, that is incorrect, we operate under what's called an expanded incident command system, or unified command. And in a unified command, some, a person from discipline A may have oversight over discipline B, depending on what the emergency is. So for example, with the propane spill this, this past Tuesday, the incident commander was the, one of the fire chiefs, and the police department and the ambulance and public works played a supporting role to that because of the nature of the incident, if there were a shooting incident. Then that would, that would put the typically the highest ranking police officer as the incident commander, but the incident commanders in an expanded unified command may report to the director of emergency management or their designated.
I just wanna say, I know Chief Carl has background in this area, and he's more than capable and has a huge amount of experience, along with his staff, so he's really competent in terms of this point. So, I'm happy to, to say, I, 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 I'm repeating the vote, or happy to say I approve your signing the letter.
I'm gonna ask for a motion from the board adopting my recommendation.
Well, I'll make a motion to to adopt the first selectmen's recommendation concerning the employment of Matthew J. Carl as director of emergency management, and Benjamin M. Murphy as deputy director of emergency management.
Second.
Any further discussion? I will just take a pro, I've talked about Chief Carl and his preparedness and expertise, but Deputy Chief Murphy brings his own to the table, and some areas that I think are both presently important and are going to be important in the future. While the snowstorm was happening on Tuesday before the incident happened, Deputy Chief Murphy was actually giving senior staff, school district officials, and the folks from Park Hill a training on active shooter response. That was very impressive, and Deputy, I appreciate your, your time putting that together. He has SWAT experience as well, and between Chief Carl, Deputy Chief Murphy and I were already in discussions about developing a certain team for the community to help with civilian, a more robust civilian response when there is a need for emergency services, and that's something that Chief Carl has said Deputy Chief will be, will be leading, so it's a great team to borrow a phrase, we have the right people in the right seats on the right bus, and now we're moving forward. Don't think I don't listen. So, with that, if there's no further discussion, I would call, call the vote on the motion.
Aye.
I probably say yes.
All right. I don't want to sign something, I want a draft watermark of it tomorrow, and I appreciate you both willing to serve in this expanded capacity. I'm gonna ask that we table agenda item eight B, there is a draft ordinance that I'm waiting for legal review on, and until that comes, I don't really have anything to talk about, so.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, look at Collins and Melissa, are you participating too, or are you here for moral support?
For.
All right. Linda, so it's community development block grant time, and we have an application for consultants to assist with a project in Park Hill. Can you tell us a bit about what the project will consist of?
Project details several capital improvements for Park Hill, much needed improvements. And for example, we're gonna be replacing the windows and the storm doors to be more energy efficient. And mini splits, we have a floor cleaner, but all of our apartments have at least one of those, our one bedrooms have two. And those are aging, one or two of those, it's almost up to ten thousand dollars, so that's a a big cut in our budget. So we're hoping that all of our mini splits and condensers will be able to be replaced with this money. And all of our handicap accessible units, we actually have seven accessible units right now that need to be upgraded to current ADA compliance guidelines. And then we actually need one more full accessible unit, so that will be added on the total of these. And we also would like to do the kitchens over in the apartments, new cabinets, flooring, countertops, everything is just aging, and it would be real nice to help those taken care of as well. And the total amount of money through the CBVG grant is two million dollars. And the state is now offering an additional four million to coincide with the CBVG, so they're kind of working together, so we would be eligible for six million dollars. So, we would really appreciate your support on this project, we've used the housing development team in the past, most recently for the tub to shower project that we did, and that was very successful, they're very competent, they're very timely with what their minds need to be met. And I have full confidence that they continue to do a great job. So I definitely recommend them.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments for Linda? Yes.
I, I wanna just say that I've had an opportunity to be educated about Park Hill with your staff, and I've met residents over there. And I'm developing a feeling of, and wanting to be protective. And I think the rest of the board feels the same way, you know, the unless people know what's happening over there in terms of serving residents, either seniors or residents with disabilities, unless people understand what's actually happening over there, and the hard work here to do with your staff, and the hard work of the residents, also, they take a lot of pride in their, in their community. You wouldn't know what's there and what we have in our community, and how important that is to us, it's really important, so I'm very supportive and happy to do anything that I can do as a board member, and I'm sure the other members feel the same, to protect, to nurture, and to help the Park Hill community move forward, so happy to, happy to support this.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
It's um it's two and six, two and four for a total of six. Is it all under the one project, or is it two separate brands?
Oh, one project.
It's all under one project?
Individual projects to make one large complete submission, or the smaller.
I just wanted to make sure that it's all going in, and if you haven't spoken out it, if you only get, say, three million out of the six, what are you going to put as priority?
Well, actually, DOH and CHFA would determine.
They determine that.
Yes, they would determine that.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to check.
They're gonna determine whether you need cabinets or mini splits?
Yep.
Oh, absolutely.
Really?
Yes.
You're looking to replace all the mini splits in all, all the kitchens? All units?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
No, um, Chief, explain where he's coming from, and you guys know where I stand, I'm supporting a bit Park Hill and made a good decision when we hired you, so continue to do good, good work up there.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you, we continue really, really to thank you all, thank you for us as well, thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the RFP from the Housing Development Team LLC.
I'll make a motion to the agreement accept the bid for CB, CDVG for Housing Development Team LLC.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so approved. Okay, we have so we have a request from the treasurer to transfer from CNR unallocated to the Assessor Rebound Line, a dollar amount of eleven thousand six hundred and ten dollars to cover a shortfall in the funding for the revow that was completed on or about November fifteenth. So you have a memo from her in there? Any discussion?
Well, why exactly was there a shortfall, I'm just, can you explain it a little bit?
So we, we use CIP funds, we typically put fifty thousand dollars a year of CIP into a CNR fund to pay for the cost of the next revow. And when we deferred the revow in twenty-two, in, in favor of doing it in twenty-three, there was not quite enough funding in there, because typically there's, there's four or five years between, instead of just the one, so we were short in the contract value for the second revow, and the eleven six, ten, eleven six ten, will, that bridges the gap.
Oh, just a follow-up question on my, so, yeah, so I just wanna understand, the, the contract cost that was bid out, that's remaining the same.
Correct.
This is not for additional work above the contract cost, you just wanna have enough money to be able to pay the contract when she went into the bid?
We had eight dollars, it costs ten dollars, we need two more dollars.
You follow me? Yeah. Right, but they're, they have charged us more money than under the original bid, so, okay.
So, there's no objection, I'd ask for a motion to transfer eleven thousand six hundred and ten dollars from CNR unallocated to the Assessor Rebound Line.
I'll make a motion that we transfer eleven thousand six hundred and ten dollars from the unallocated CIP to three zero zero five four one one one. Three zero zero five four one 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 day, five seventeen nine hundred, committee assessor rebound number three oh five four one three one. Five seven six zero zero five to cover expenses.
Got it, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I. I.
Tax refunds. You can just hand that aside.
To approve the tax refunds totaling two hundred and forty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Post? All right. Why those reports? Uh two weeks ago, the town was able to join in a ceremony with Senator Blumenthal and State Representative Jamie Foster to present a Purple Heart to the descendants of Anthony Potainis. A World War One veteran from East Windsor who was wounded in battle, returned home and lived out his days right under the Mary House Wing. For decades, Private Potainis's service and injuries were unrecognized until his grandson became an advocate for his grandfather. Demonstrated that he had in fact served and been injured in the line of duty. Senator Blumenthal noted that this ceremony, which was held right here. Um may very well be the very last posthumous Purple Award, Purple Heart Award. Um given to a World War One veteran anywhere, which I think is a really full testament. Over the last several weeks, the town finance director and I have met with every department seeking funding for the next fiscal year. Uh which has taken roughly half of the working hours over the last two weeks. We have a lot more work to go before my budget gets submitted, uh I think one week from today. Um on Thursday, I was happy to join Representative Hall and other elected officials in welcoming new additions to our business community. Crispy crunchy chicken and between rounds opened in Bastille Plaza cohabitating with the gas station there. I do want to note that the owners of that plaza, the new owners of that plaza, I should say. Um have been making a significant investment into the plaza, creating new life into it and that is starting to show. Um the chicken and the biscuits were fantastic. Um and they uh they would be a quick, a perfect fit for any family that may be on the go between school and work and extracurricular activities. Um they were fresh and tasty and very convenient. Uh one of my goals over the next year is an increased focus on emergency preparedness. I talked about this a little bit. Um to illustrate that, on Tuesday, Deputy Chief Murphy was sharing some of his impressive expertise in active shooter for active shooter response. With a presentation of the town senior staff as well as staff from the East with their housing authority and the public school system. Deputy Chief Murphy has been teaching this for more than a decade and also brings with him experience as a SWAT officer. Excuse me if I'm getting any of the vernacular there incorrect, but the general gist is he really knows the stuff and is willing to share it with us. Um as the deputy's lecture was taking place, our fire departments were called away from that meeting to the scene of a propane gas spill. That was the result of a car accident on Route Five. Now, I just wanna picture this, you have a tractor trailer without a trailer attached to it. Driving down the road and it happens to fishtail across traffic into oncoming traffic and hits of all things a propane truck. It could have hit anything in the world and it instead hit the probably the only propane truck to be on Route Five that day, but that's what happened. And it resulted in a spill of about twenty-five hundred uh gallons of liquid propane. That caused the traffic having to be diverted off Route Five through Scampick. Uh the power grid shut down for uh upwards of ten hours, I think. Um a hundred and sixty customers to be without power, people having to be evacuated within fifteen hundred feet of the accident scene. First responders standing in this in the snow uh and the freezing rain for about ten hours. Um and limited resources because the town's labor force, the public works crew was out plowing the roads. This would sound like an absolute nightmare. Oh, and we opened an evacuation facility only to find out the evacuation facility was on the same grid that didn't have power. So what sounds like it would be an absolute dreadful train wreck. Was actually pretty smooth and the reason for that is because uh in October, our emergency management team had drilled something substantially similar to this. Except in that case, the the hazardous material spill was conceptualized to be right at the end of Main Street Broadbrook. And it was the the middle school that had to be back. So as the day was unfolding, Chief Carl and I spent a good chunk of the day together and and kept saying to each other, this feels really familiar. Um and it's because we had actually gotten together as a team and practiced specifically this. Um the end result was our emergency services did a fantastic job. We felt prepared and ready for the circumstances that were coming forward and I think that really does also speak to. That notion of having the right people on the right seats on the right bus and and there are good things that are happening there and uh I'm gonna have a lot more to say about that. Um during my my budget presentation. Uh one takeaway that would have that we, I think. Chief Carl and I agreed that would have helped us that day was if we had had that um cert team, the community emergency response team. Oh, Chief Bart, I didn't see when you were fantastic business and commander that day. Smooth as silk the whole way and under very trying circumstances, so thank you. Um so the presence of a a cert team um would have helped us if we were staffing up. And an evacuation location or if there was a need for traffic diversion or something like that. That had been brought to us just prior to Christmas uh by a constituent for former uh naval officer. Who had said, my son-in-law works on this as a state at the state level and I wanted to join East Windsor's only to find out that we don't have. Well, we had already talked about this is one of our goals for the coming year is to set this up. Then we had this gentleman, the retired naval officer come in and express his interest in participating in it. And now we have the demonstrated need for uh that civilian support, so the pieces are coming together quite nicely. Um to to enhance our emergency preparedness in town and and again, I'm gonna talk more about that in my budget. Um we do have extreme cold temperatures that are forecasted until midday on Monday. Uh and the town hall annex is going to be available for anyone who may need a warming center between now and then. Um if you do need to shelter, just enter through the main entrance to the police department and take a right down the hallway. Uh that will be accessible twenty-four seven, it will be uh once we know that there's somebody in there, we staff accordingly um and it's available if anybody needs. The Panther Plunge is coming back up again, so several of us have talked about doing it. Great. Um East Windsor Community Services is asking local businesses, organizations and individuals uh to help support this fundraiser for. Uh the East Windsor Fuel Bank. Um it is cold and uncomfortable and a really good time, so anybody wants to come and do it with us, you're more than welcome. Um but really what we want to do is make sure that we're doing whatever we can as a community to be supportive of families that may need. Uh that additional support for heating assistance in the winter time. Um the event is gonna be February seventeen at one P M at East Windsor Park. Um the senior center is now uh working with AARP to set up a free tax filing service. Appointments are available beginning February fifth and run through tax day on April fifteen. Um all sessions will be held at Town Hall Annex and anybody who's interested in signing up can call. Uh senior services for more information. Um and lastly, it's just a a note of personal interest of mine, but I think it's it's should be noted in the community as well. Um the East Windsor High School boys and girls basketball teams are having a phenomenal season. Um both of them look like they are state tournament bound, they're playing like top-notch basketball. It's great to see people come out and support um our our successful winter sports teams. And tomorrow night, it's Thursday, tomorrow night um at five thirty, a young lady named Bailey Winner, who was a junior at the high school. Is likely to score her one thousand points. Uh which is a benchmark that not many people get to and she's only a junior. Um so there it's it's a great way of spending, you know, my son and I go to almost every game, it's a great way of spending family time. Um and supporting um our our kids as well. So that's all I have, I'll turn it over to Marice.
Um I want to apologize, I have to use my phone for my report, it's my computer, it does whatever it wants to do other than what I'm going to do. Here I go. On January eighth, I attended East Windsor Park and Recreation Commission uh meeting. And we stated that Director Maltese was working on the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um with First Lockman Jason Baller and the Finance Director Altual, who report back to the committee in March. Um current financial financials were discussed and are in line with appropriate spending for this time of year. Um it was noted that a freezer refrigerator needed to be replaced unexpectedly. Uh fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, users fees were set for a hundred and fifty dollars for the Abbey Road soccer fields. Um and the park fees um were cabled until next meeting um in March. Uh there's some uh research that needs to be done before uh they come up with on. What they're going to do. Our project updates were given, the soccer field lights have been installed. New playground um is anticipated to be completed around May first. Upcoming events, not to be redundant, but the Plankton Fund is gonna be held on uh February seventeen. I know myself is um participating in that, um and I always have. Um they are looking for donations, so even if people can't participate, I mean, I can always write out a check um. To uh that function. Um and the kids fishing dirty for those that are interested um is scheduled for May fourth, twenty twenty-four. Hang on, I gotta put over to my next page. On January tenth, I attended the East Windsor Police Commission meeting. Uh the financial reports available were discussed and approved with emphasis on the overtime budget. Uh due to staffing issues, overtime is being utilized until they are fully staffed. Um we stated that Inspector Osborne will be starting on January sixteenth and Officer Calbrun is. Due to complete his training, hang on. Um soon and beginning is uh field training um shortly thereafter. Currently, there's three positions still available. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget process is taking place. Um there is a line of sight issue in the area of fifteen Presic Road that has been an ongoing issue. Um but it's out of the traffic authority responsibility, therefore I brought it to the attention of the first selectmen. Followed it to address further with proper individuals for address that um issue. Um community outreach continues with coffee with the cops at the senior center was held on January tenth. And active shooter training at the schools in town. And then. The East Windsor Housing Authority meeting that was to be held on January seventeenth was canceled, so I have nothing to report on there. Um the elderly commission and the ethnic commission um, what's the name, um. Are currently inactive that I've been assigned to, so I'll be working um to revitalize the elderly commission. Um in the near future and once that is completed, or then we'll look more in um to reestablish. On the other committee, uh and that's all I have.
Okay, so Wetlands didn't meet this month because uh they had no work to do. Uh Broadbrook Fire Department, I actually have two reports from them that I haven't recorded, uh but I was kinda putting them together. Uh they're working on that uh with H two N, uh the contracts for uh studying, the feasibility study for, you know, future planning. That's starting, I think they've had some meetings by now, there is a first one. Okay, yeah, and so we'll be hearing more about that. Um you know, that's to figure out what they want to do and how they wanna deal with their their space after the community center uh goes online. Uh chief's report, they had about just under eight hundred calls for the year. Um he did report that about twenty-five percent of their shifts are they're having a hard time filling, a lot of the guys are, you know, working full-time, so. Um they're trying to work on that. They had a fire, as you know, last that last month and sixty-three calls just in that month. Um fire marshal's working on a couple of things, they're now starting to. Uh use the the warehouse point assistant fire marshal over here to help out with some of the load, uh so that. Energy, you know, uh of sharing two things is working out, uh the office is working out really well now. Um their budget that they're that's coming up is current budget is in line. The budget that we're going to see in in a few weeks uh has a couple increases in it. Um fuel and lap insurance, which is kind of unavoidable. And they're also, they decided to join the town email system because it's litigious as society is getting, they feel like their members shouldn't be using their personal. Their their personal addresses. Um except for them, yeah, um planning and zoning. They uh are working, they started working on the P O C D survey survey questions, so they decided to. Kinda shorten it up from the last one, because it was just a lot of stuff that was in there that was not something that could be done. Where it's really kinda outside the scope of the O C D, so a lot of people weren't finishing the survey, so they didn't get a lot of information, so we'll have to start. Um letting people know when that survey is ready that they should take it. Um they uh did not approve the eight twenty-four referral we did for Ten Morris Road. Um they did some, the the uh planning office apparently did some research after we had voted to approve it. And it actually was part of open space of the subdivision. So of course we can't just sell or give it away, so they did reject that luckily, um where we messed that up and.
Have have they had any recent discussions around whether or not to accept the open space swaps versus the fee?
Well, certainly didn't, they did discuss that and in this case, I'm not sure that that's um something the person is interested in, but you could still go the fee in lieu of.
That's really should be the primary.
Yeah, so for people that are okay with that, they could just pay that fee in lieu of open space and then that's been that's been checked out. Um but in this case, I don't think that was any interest. And that's all I have for you. Sarah.
Okay, uh January eighth, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire Commissioners Meeting. There were fifty-six fire calls in the month of December and seven hundred and twenty calls in two thousand twenty-three. Fire Marshal Rich Austin reported that thirty-five inspections were done last month. There was also some discussion that per the state fire marshal effective January first of this year. That the district can no longer bill for liquor permits, which will cause a possible loss of revenue. The district was requesting fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for highway funding this year. Um and the district also participated in a five-year review of the I S O rating, which stands for Insurance Services Office. Which is a company that creates ratings for fire departments in their communities. Um this year, they received a three point three rating, which was lowered from last year's four point four. Which should help lower homeowners insurance rates if you live within the Warehouse Point Fire District. The new rating will take effect April first of this year. The Arts and Culture Committee held their regular meeting on January ninth. The committee is host, working on hosting an open mic night at the Connecticut Trolley Museum on Saturday, April sixth. From six to eight P M. Performance performances can include spoken word, short stories, poetry, music or comedy. A flyer with the complete criteria is soon to come. The planning on Arts and Culture Day to be held on May eighteenth is coming together rather nicely. There will be a birdhouse decorating contest, um and that flyer with the criteria just went up on their Facebook page. There'll be demonstrations, music, food trucks, and they're working on hopefully having a tractor walk as well. They are also teaming up with East Windsor High School again this year and are collecting pallet boards. That are at least five and a half inches wide and twenty inches long to help the senior class create personalized boards. If you have some that you'd like to donate, you can email E W Arts and Culture at gmail dot com. On January tenth, I attended the opioid prevention and Narcan training. Put on by the Connecticut Harm Reduction Alliance here at Town Hall. This was a very informative presentation given by Courtney Dollar, who is the acting deputy director. I was grateful for the opportunity to attend and learn how to administer Narcan if needed. Later that day, I attended the Board of Education meeting. There was a Broadbrook School Report given by Principal Laura Fox and Assistant Principal Matthew Ryan. Which was focused on academic and social emotional learning. It was titled Rough. Which stands for read, understand, feelings and facts. The goal is to teach students how to use vocabulary in structured conversations around their thinking. And to have accountable talk with their peers. Um Daryl Ruliar gave a literacy update. It was explained that the eye-ready diagnostic. That the district has been using is no longer approved by the state for this school year. So they're using dibbles, which is um state required and they're kinda using both, but. Um to screen performance, but it's important to note that the results of dibbles is aligning with the results of eye-ready so far. So all the work that they've done um over the past two years is is going in the right direction. Um it was also reported that on the education side, the audit was filed on time. With no extensions needed and that there was no reportable findings this year, which is excellent news. Um two social workers from our school district went to Summers last Friday morning. To help with grief counseling as a result of the tragic fire that happened recently in Summers. And the Booster Club also raised seven hundred and fifty dollars. At the high school basketball game, which was a week ago Tuesday, to donate to the Summers family. Who lost their loved ones in the fire. Um and I was unfortunately unable to attend the Veterans Commission meeting. Cause I had a conflict with another meeting. Um I think that's all that I have.
All right, Keith.
I was I was uh honored to attend the Purple Heart Ceremony. Um do you imagine a World War One veteran um. Serving in combat in World War One and being injured, it's just it's just horrific and amazing at the same time. Um I want to point out that my. Um, I want to point out that I personally feel that if it wasn't for our veterans, we wouldn't be here at this democratic, uh, meeting tonight. Um, and so it was really amazing to be part of that Purple Heart ceremony, to be able to witness it. Um, I did attend the crispy chicken ribbing cutting. Uh, I met the, uh, gentleman Ali who's running that business. I met his wife and his youngest child. They have made a very significant financial investment in our community and in their family to be able to operate that business. It's beautiful inside and they're really, uh, working hard to make the goal of it. I'm going to be, uh, buying gas and participating in purchases there and I encourage our community to support our local businesses. Very important we do that, especially these, uh, family-run businesses. Um, I'd like to ask for, um, if we can have on the future, um, the future agenda items, I'd like to ask if we could have a discussion about the E D C. The Economic Development Commission has not met in a year and a half. It looks like there's actually only two members that are actually, uh, local members. One member, the third member resigned in twenty twenty-one. Um, I'd like to ask maybe we can get a, uh, agenda item on the E D C and how can we move that forward. Um, also, um, I'd like to ask if we can get an update on the revaluation. A, a lot, some people will do well in the reval and some people are going to be hurt badly. I think going into budget season, um, and so to, for people to know their own individual situation with the revaluation and where they stand, they should have that some data so that they can decide how they feel about the budget. So, um, perhaps we can get a report from the assessor to come in at a future meeting, um, so that they can explain what the average increases are for residential, for businesses, so people can determine how it's going to impact them. And, uh, before we get, they have to decide how to vote for the question. Last thing is I want to address the seating issue here. Um, this is a straight table. I've been elected official elsewhere and it's always been a curved table. And a curved table allows you to see your fellow members when you're sitting there. Straight table, you can't see, it's very difficult to see people talking and to communicate visually with people. So I made a decision to, to sit, um, at the, at the end, I moved. Paul, I just made a comment. You can see I shifted my seat back so I can be more aligned, but be able to still communicate. I do think it's really important that I can see both the audience but also communicate with members of the board. Otherwise, I don't think we're talking to each other. So I just want to explain, it's not because I want to be separate from anybody. I actually want to be included in the Board of Selectmen and I want to be able to increase my eye contact and my communication and, and participate. So it might be the opposite of what people think. Because I'm sitting at the end, it's really, I want to be more involved with the, with the other select, the selectmen here. That's my report.
Thank you. Uh, is pertaining to a report?
Well, I was just wondering if any of these meetings transpired?
Well, we'll take that up later. Um, we're going to turn now to public participation, the public's second opportunity to address. Um, same rules as before. I'll, I'll first ask anybody who's here to identify yourself by name and address, and then provide the same opportunity to anybody who's, who's here online. Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
When I was speaking.
You say, can I sneak out? And then you say, I have to take my.
Oh. Go ahead.
Just be glad and neglected to give a personal thanks. I just do it to Alyssa. She is amazing and she means so much for Park Hill and most resourceful and wonderful procurement uh, requirements, which is a lot of work. And I know you're going to be continuing to work with us on this.
It's a pleasure.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you for that. Is there any, any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Uh, back Carl, uh, if it's twenty-five, we're free. So I just want to comment on something I can just put in the report, um, in the interest of the East Windsor Police Department, um, the public engagement and you know, back to the community, uh, my deputy chief, no less than ten hours ago, secured a, uh, a fundraiser basketball tournament or game with the East Windsor Police Department versus the basketball teams in, in East Windsor. I wish I had your information before he did that. I want to publicly thank him for doing that and I reported the beating. Uh, I think we should have done some more work on that. Yeah, we're going to take on this team when that's like, well, they're pretty good. Yeah, once, once again, March twenty-second, awesome. We're going to advertise the Navy and, uh, yeah, we're going to be embarrassed about that.
That's awesome. Um, are you going to be, what are you going to be wearing for uniforms?
Um, I, I probably will be sitting this out with an injury and watching you guys. I was born and I played basketball in college. Uh, we have some college basketball players. I'm looking, I'll, I'll be looking for ringers now in light of the information we give us.
They're nine deep.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
That'll be great. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Can I make a suggestion? Yeah, maybe we can get a half round table?
Um, I will, I will share that if, uh, if there's still room in the town properties budget towards the end of the year, we will look into options for that. I appreciate that.
Somebody else probably would too.
Is there other public comment? Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board? If so, please unmute yourselves, state your name and your address and state your business.
Jason Norian Farmer, two forty-seven South Water Street. I just wanted to comment on the Panther Plunge for anybody who's thinking it's too cold. I did it with my granddaughter last year. We made it to our knees. This year, we're intending to make it to our waist. It's very, very cold, but you get very warm afterwards because there's a really big bonfire and it's absolutely an awesome day to spend in that park and just just freeze for a good reason. And, um, hopefully we'll see you all there.
We'll be rooting for you.
Great.
There is no getting warm after you get out of that.
Okay, we will have an executive session. It will include just the members of the Board of Selectmen. There will be no action. I expect no action afterwards. Uh, could I have a motion to go into executive session? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. We will have one vote, that's right.
Will we go into executive session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session at seven fifty percent, yeah. Alright, it's eight forty-eight P M. We're out of executive session. Uh, the only matters still to be taken up by the Board of Selectmen is to take from the table Agenda Item four B, the January fourth, twenty twenty-four Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion?
A move that we postpone the January fourth, twenty twenty-four Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes until our next meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, with no further business to come before the board, uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at eight forty-eight P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn, we are adjourned at eight forty-nine.